First time I meet Chairman in a while.
Right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, October 26, 2023. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm Phil Nemisak, and I'm the Acting Chairman today in Jim Bonanno's absence, but I will call the balance of the roll call. As I mentioned, James Bonanno will not be here. Anthony Jacoby.
Present.
Joseph Rubino.
Present.
Michael Fortuno.
Present.
All right, very good. So we've got that done. There are two sets of minutes, you know, transcripts of prior Planning Board meetings that have yet to be approved, but we can't approve the June 22, 23 minutes because we need at least three members of the board who were on that, who were at that meeting to approve it. So we'll move on, and I have circulated some relatively minor revisions to the September 28, 2023 transcript of the Planning Board meeting. I've circulated that within the board and to Lucas and all other parties, Rob Tedesco, I believe, as well. And so I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 28, 2023 Planning Board meeting, subject to the few minor revisions that are set forth in my email of today's date.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so on to the meat of the meeting. We have three applications that are before, that will be before the board this evening, and they are in order. One item of old business, which is Application 21-17, which is the 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision. And importantly, that is before us for a very limited purpose of considering a lead agency resolution, that the planning board would be the lead agency for purposes of this application. The balance of the application for subdivision approval has been adjourned to the next, to the next Planning Board meeting, or at least won't be heard at this one. I believe it went to the zoning Board of Appeals, right?
No, we're still working on the details.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still working with the applicant.
That's right. There were consultants that, okay, very good. So second item of business is 23-29 Polpatina, and the third item is 23-3249 Main Street and 27 New Street. So if you haven't heard the application you're interested in, there is Thursday Night Football tonight to leave right now and probably catch the opening kickoff, but I guarantee this will be scintillating. And I know we have a very sizable viewing audience at home that thinks the same. So without any further delay, let's proceed with the, with Application 21-17, which is 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision.
So for this application, the applicant's not coming in tonight to present. All you, all this is, is just like an administrative action, just to vote to adopt the lead agency resolution. Two meetings ago, you declared your intent to be lead agency under Seeker, and the 30 days have expired. Nobody has objected to the planning board assuming the role of lead agency. So all you have to do now is just vote to declare yourselves lead agency.
Okay, and I think I have the language right here. I think it's, yep.
Yeah, right.
I'm going to proceed, and if I need anything more, you tell me. I make a motion to designate the Eastchester Planning Board as lead agency for the review of Application 21-17, 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, done. I can tell you that Chairman Bonanno would have taken 20 minutes with that. All right, next, the second item on our agenda is Application 23-29 Polpatina, 16 Hall Place. We have John Yanacito here to present.
Good evening. My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Polpatina Restaurant, the ground floor tenant at the subject property. We are requesting a special permit to continue using the area in front of the building for outdoor dining, as it has been for the past several years. I'll come over to the drawings. So here we have the survey or the site plan showing the existing dining area highlighted in yellow, and then this is a enlarged plan of the dining area showing the table layout. The proposed outdoor dining will have 10 tables and 26 seats, and will all be located within the limits of the property lines. We are also proposing a new entry ramp at the main entrance in order to make that existing entrance accessible.
Is it not accessible now?
There's a small step there.
Okay.
There's about a four or five inch step at the front door.
So we're talking about ADA accessibility?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
ADA and elderly.
Yeah, okay.
Here are some photos of the existing furniture, which will be reused. The tables and the chairs are black metal, and the tabletops are stone. This is the larger table with the umbrella at the end of the dining area, and this is a couple of benches that will be relocated in front of the new ramp. There will be no, no music, no additional lighting, no additional signage for the dining area, and all of the chairs and tables will be stored indoors after the hours of operations. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Of course, the big question is, I've actually eaten in the outdoor dining area here. What, what, what has changed that has made you come before us this evening?
Well, so I don't think they had, they had this approved during the COVID years, and they never formally got an official approval, and this is for the official approval for outdoor dining.
Okay, so is this, is this one of those situations, and we've dealt with many of them on this board, where during COVID, as certainly a lifeline both to restaurants and to people who are hungering to eat at them, there were a lot of, let's say, informal arrangements, permissions given to have outdoor dining, and that's where this originated?
Right.
And now we're, Polpatina, because I know they were, they're closed for a little while, doing renovations from around Easter time until maybe a month or two ago, and now they're, they're formalizing what has, I believe, been a pretty successful outdoor dining option.
Yes, they were very happy to have it during the COVID years, and they want to make it a permanent seasonal dining.
Yeah, that was going to be my other question. Seasonal means what, in practical terms?
So, you know, now it's probably another few weeks until it gets a little cold, and they'll shut it down, and then it'll come back when, in March?
Yeah, March.
In March.
Yep. Now, there's always that nice day in February, you know, when we're all fooled into thinking that it's spring is coming. Is the thought to have this, the chairs and tables available so that if you have that nice day in February where people are clamoring to be outside, you can put them out?
I guess, yeah, they could always bring some tables outside if it, if it is a nice day in February, yeah.
Yeah, the permit, it doesn't constrain them to operating during a certain period of time.
No, no, the, seasonally, no, but time of day, yes.
Time of day, yes.
And also, if I could just ask a question, the, the storage of the furniture has currently been stored in front of the restaurant with a cable lock. So
Yes.
I've been telling, we haven't, I told the code enforcement officer, okay, just give them a break because they're coming before the planning board, but that has to be worked out.
The plan is to store it indoors, right? So from now on, the furniture's going to be stored?
It wants to come up, yeah.
Put your name on the record.
It's Joe Lodi, owner of Polpatina, co-owner. We have a place in the, in NHVAC sort of area in the backyard with a set of steps going down. We could put our stuff down there. But we also have the dining room itself, which would be easier for us at night, around 10 o'clock when we close down, you know, 9:30, 10, to bring it right through the front door. It's just a lot easier. Winter storage, we'd probably bring it where it's not going to be coming in and out and pain in the neck, you know, moving it, you know, in and out of the front of the store. So the idea is to either bring it down into the basement or leave it in the front of the store when we're, when we're using it on a daily basis.
Okay, but, but, yeah, the, I think Lucas's point was, when you close the store every evening, when you close the restaurant every evening, and I've noticed this too, because I walk to and from the, you know, I live right in this area, and I walked down Fisher Avenue to the Crestwood Train Station, and in fact, I walked up from the Crestwood Train Station this evening, and I believe every outdoor seat was occupied by a diner, and there were people waiting. So congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
It looks like your relaunch has done very well.
Thank you.
I know there have been favorable reviews on your pizza that I've seen.
Thank you, thank you.
So, so, you know, this is a full-service planning board. We also pitch for our, but, but the concern was that, you know, they, it is a bit of an eyesore to see, you know, chairs, you know, I understand that, the convenience of having them locked up, no one's going to take them that way, but where, I don't think the town has a problem with them storing them in the, as long as they're indoors.
That's correct, yeah, but I just need to make it clear that if they're kept outside, you'll be issued a violation, and you could lose a special permit you may get tonight.
We'll abide by it, absolutely.
Okay, good.
So is the only, I guess, adjustment to the COVID time until now, is that just adding of the ramp because all the seating is the same? That's a question for the architect, I guess.
With the ramp, we're gonna, we're gonna actually have a few less tables than what they have today.
Okay.
But, yeah, the only change, permanent change, is the ramp. Everything else will be.
And it's just a ramp? It's not like a vestibule or anything?
Uh, no, just a ramp, yep. The ramp up to a platform, and then it will have a railing also.
Can I also ask, I don't see where it, if it grants or restricts the use of any sort of like propane or electric heating? Is there any plan to do that, or is that covered?
You know, we have had heaters out there before, you know, just like the stand-up ones, not underneath an awning or anything like that, nothing, you know, against the fire department rules, and the fire department consistently checked on those things during COVID. But we did use an outdoor, like, one of those vinyl vestibule, you know, enclosures to, for people, so the wind doesn't like, come flying into the place. So that would be nice to use it in the ADA ramp area, not to go outside the railing there, and I think it would, you know, look appropriate to it, and I think it would be convenient for people and not, you know, because it gets cold when the door opens, the cold air just rushes right in. So if we could be allowed to use that again, that would be great.
I'm just not sure if that's part of this approval, or if it's a different approval to put an enclosure around the ramp just in the wintertime, a vinyl enclosure.
If you come talk to us about that, I'll have to check it with the building inspector, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't sound like a major undertaking, but, and it's temporary, it's during.
Yeah, just the winter months.
Yeah, wait, so you're talking about a small enclosure around the door, seasonal?
Right, just so that the cold air doesn't rush into the space.
Yeah, I don't believe that would require a planning board approval, but.
It might require some type of permit, I guess, from.
Yeah, 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 from the building inspector, right, but I don't think you'd have to come back.
It sounds like it's a temporary seasonal fixture, and not something that's permanent.
Yeah, and it's completely within the property lines. It's not going to be on the sidewalk.
And this ADA ramp isn't going to interfere with the ability to, to go up to the window and get some of that delicious ice cream, is it?
The window is going to be before the, before the ramp.
Okay, got it. All right. I don't have any further questions. All right. I think we have to have a public hearing, yep. Make a motion to open the public hearing on Application 23-29 Polpatina, 16 Hall Place.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public, yes.
Hi, good evening. I would like to first start out to say that, please excuse any words that I might say. This is my first time speaking in front of a board.
Okay, if you could identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Samuel Lugo. I live at 16 Hall Place, right above the restaurant, and my apartment is the one right alignment with the front facing of the restaurant. So during my time there, I've lived there for about two and a half years. As they have said, they have already implemented from COVID the outside restaurants, and given that, they have already done it. Luckily, there have been problems that have arisen. They are asking to add 10 tables and 26 seats. This is a fairly large amount of tables to add to the occupancy that they already have, and with that, it adds issues. As we have seen from their drawings, they are, in their drawings, showing that they will not be blocking the doorway, but this does not coalign with the images that you have seen, where clearly a table is blocking the doorway. And I would like to ask, how long the ramp would have to be, because I believe that there is a standard for the incline, on how long the ramp would have to be, and would it not interfere with that one table and with that result?
When you say the doorway, are you referring to the doorway to go upstairs, or the doorway to go into the restaurant?
Doorway into the restaurant.
Okay.
So this is currently with the restaurant and the pedestrians, and the reason I bring that issue is because, as we have also seen, there's a tree and a sign in the way in the images, and the tables are fairly close. They are taking about 90% of the sidewalk at that point. And when you have to walk through there, only one person, maybe a mom with a stroller, you'd have to wait. So that will be affecting the pedestrian traffic, as stated in the application, that they said they would not be affecting that. So that would be an issue that I would see there. Also, continuing to the vehicle traffic, Polpatina's is a very popular restaurant. Congratulations to them. I'm sure, I hope they are doing well. But of course, you have heard that they are parking at the pumps, past the parking signs, and that creates a very plausible danger. I'm sure you might be aware, 16 Hall Place had an incident a few months ago where Con Edison had an accident, and they blew a power line into the building. Now.
I wasn't aware of that, but I saw the Con Ed trucks. So, thank you.
We have images of the Con Ed truck, the firefighters.
Do you want to post them up here, or just put them on the easel so people can see?
No problem. So these images are from my brother's vehicle as he was leaving Ford at the time. He was leaving Ford, that was around 6:00 PM, when they blew the power line, and he had to evacuate the building. You can see that the fire trucks are in the middle of the road, because in these images, you can see that there's a Con Ed truck blocking Hall Place, so they cannot make their way up there, and alongside where the fire trucks are, there, there is a Con Ed truck where the pump is. Now, replace these Con Ed trucks with the vehicles that come to the restaurant, wait there. I have seen firsthand that unfortunately they have to wait 30 minutes, maybe more, that's all I've seen, to get their order and come outside, and the vehicles are still on during that time. Now, I don't want anyone to get hurt during that time when Con Ed blew the power line. I wasn't home, fortunately. Returning home and seeing that there was an issue, my brother saying that they weren't able to get to the building as fast, minutes cost lives in these scenarios. If something were to have happened, and they would have to have acted a lot faster, we could have had a very different situation. Now, there have been two instances already where I have been home where fire trucks have had to come to Polpatina's as the alarm has been set off. I assume there will be a third time. Given that they are, in practice, are asking for this space, for the 10 seedings, you can see that they are asking for a sizable variance, in the sense that these seats are close and packed in the pictures. You can see that in practice, it looks fine with the umbrella. They have it nice and spread out to look good for the picture, but in reality, if you go there, the seats are back-to-back. No one is going to be sitting comfortably there. They're going to have people pushing the boundaries, as you said, and it was against the code, which is why we are here. Ignorance is not an excuse for the law. They knew what they were doing. Unfortunately, they were still doing it, and gladly, they were, because as it came to the nicer, the nicer weather, and they were staying out there later, it brought problems that were arisen. People like to drink. Drinking brings problems with noise, obviously, and unfortunately, it brings confrontation. Multiple nights, 11, 11:30, people would come down from the center of Eastchester, from the center of Tuckahoe, that is on either side, people from the restaurant would start screaming, breaking things, and unfortunately, my vehicle sometimes was parked out front, and I would have to stay up worried that I'm going to wake up to damage, and I would have to, you know, get up, get dressed, go attend to the situation. Given these parameters, they have already shown that they are willing to go above the board's approval in doing these things. Obviously, COVID was a horrible time. I'm glad they survived. That's a business, that's fine, but we're back to a regular situation, where COVID is not, no longer an issue, I shouldn't say, but it's not as precedent. The final issue I do want to have is their garbage management. Obviously, they're asking for 10 tables, 26 people. You're looking at more than 100 people a day on a busy night, given that, you know, maybe two hours each time throughout the day as they are open. This is going to add to their landfill. Now, already they have it where it's on Hall Place, on the other side of the building, that is around the corner. They do have an issue of leaving it out too early, and the building has complained, not directly to the tenants, but we have received complaints from the City of Eastchester, saying that there's a rodent issue in the neighborhood already. We already have these rodents. The tenants are being, I shouldn't say threatened, but encouraged to deal with these issues themselves, or you aren't getting a renewal in your lease. Who isn't being blamed? The restaurant. Who has garbage and food alongside the road? The restaurant. Unfortunately, the area, their garbage management is just not sufficient enough, right? It's overfilled. They leave it out Sunday night. No one comes Monday morning, so they leave it out until Tuesday pickup. So it's out, I'm assuming we are supposed to leave it out just the night before the pickup, and not two nights before, leaving time for rodents to come. And with that, that is all the issues, I think, and I don't want to use any more of your time, but these are precedent issues that I believe should be considered in this application, as you are just simply adding to all of these problems. And again, I'm so happy that they are successful. As people, I do not have anything against them. Great that they're there, but unfortunately, they cannot handle, they have too much on their plate already. I don't see why we would do something as reckless as to add on to that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I did want to clarify that, at least in my understanding, that they weren't, that with respect to COVID, there was sort of a blanket, you know, and this happened in the city, too. You know, outdoor dining was permitted sort of across the board for, both for purposes of the restaurants and, and the diners, and it's taken a while to, you know, people like outdoor dining, you know, and, and I, as I said, I've actually eaten at Polpatina Outdoors and enjoyed it, if it's a nice night, and I think most people, at least at the hours I'm eating there, are, seem to be pretty responsible. I mean, this evening, there was, I could see there was a, I could see there was a guy drinking a beer. He had his wife and his little daughter with him, seemed to be acting very responsibly and having, having a good meal. So the fact that they're before us, I mean, they're not the first, and I'm sure they won't be the last, to seek a permit of this nature. And, you know, part of the reason why we have this application process that includes a, a public hearing is to hear the concerns that are voiced by people exactly like yourself, who are most directly affected by, by something like this. So I think I've heard everything you've said, and certainly I have a question or two about, about hours, for starters. I know this is, and this isn't, you know, even as proposed, it sounds like this is something that would, the restaurant's there, and it's approved, and it's, and I understand that there are traffic problems, because it's a tight area. It seems that everything in this town that we have, you know, that's, particularly if it's popular, we have some sort of a parking and traffic issue. But the restaurant's there, and the restaurant's staying, they just did renovations. What's before us today is, is a request for a permit that would be, that would permit seasonally, so not even the, the full year, but seasonally, outdoor dining. And I think, you know, on a rainy day, no one's going to eat outdoors. So it's, it's certainly less than, than full-time. On top of that, I know, I can't remember which day of the week the restaurant is closed, is it Tuesday, maybe?
Monday.
Monday, okay. So, so it's not even seven days a week, but I do want to hear a little more from the applicant about the hours of operation, and, and also to address the concerns that this resident raised about, about garbage.
I can address the.
Before you do, I just want to just clarify, I guess, one of the things that the, I guess, the person who came to address the board, I'm guessing is the increased capacity may increase the capacity for garbage or whatever, and from an enforcement point of view, in terms of the town, when violations happen, typically, the code enforcement officer or the building inspector would come out. If there is an increased capacity in a restaurant or a store or something that would require a larger dumpster or a, an increase in the schedule of pickups, that is something that is typically addressed, and I'm certain that the building department will address that with the applicant, and you should feel free to contact the building department, because if there is an additional need, that it becomes a burden to the community, perhaps it might mean a minor fix of just, you know, getting a bigger dumpster, or, you know, an extra pickup during the week, that is possible. Certainly, we all want to be mindful of, you know, the community's concerns, but also in terms of an enforcement perspective, as the person who, you know, manages the violations, we don't want to see it get to that place if it doesn't have to. So, you know, to the extent there are concerns, I'm sure we can, you know, discuss them with the applicant and the building department.
Okay, yeah, so the two, the two main concerns that I heard were, one about rowdiness, perhaps, it might be the word, late-night rowdiness, you know, people overindulging a little bit, being loud. So I'd like to know something about the, the hours, you know, both on weekends and during the week. And the second issue, the second major issue there was, well, there were three, actually. The second one was about the, the garbage, and then there was also the concern about the vehicular traffic and, you know, the impositions. I mean, I'm not sure that if someone's sitting in a car waiting for their pizza, that they won't move if there's a fire truck. I don't think that's an issue. But if, but if people are parking illegally, then that's an enforcement issue, and, and one that I think if it's, if it's regularly enforced, and the, the owners make it clear to their patrons that this is an area that's where parking violations are strictly monitored, that that would lead to a reduction in, in those issues. But if you could address, John, to your, to the extent possible, those issues.
Those issues, I think I'll have Joe address.
Okay, that's fine.
I wanted to address the questions about tables being in front of access entryways.
Yes.
So previously, before we did the renovations on the building, the, there were two entrances on Hall Place, oh, no, on Fisher.
Fisher.
And one entrance on Hall. So we reduced that to one entrance on Hall, one entrance on, on Fisher. So I'm not sure if that, the photos that this gentleman had showed the old entrance or not. And we're also adding this ramp, which, which we're going to reconfigure the seating area and push it over closer to Hall's, the Hall Avenue corner, and when I can have any tables near the ramp. So the access to the building should never be blocked by any tables.
Where, where would the ramp be? Show me.
So here, so here's the front, the front of the building. So the ramp is, this is the main entrance to the, to the, to the restaurant.
Yep.
So this is the ramp right here.
Got it, and it slopes, it slopes towards.
So the, the site actually slopes up.
That's right.
And then the ramp slopes back, back up. So, so at this point. So, so at this point, we're actually, because the, the, the sidewalk is sloping up, the ramp doesn't have to be as long as needed to, to meet ADA, because we're already up a certain amount of inches when we get to this point.
That's right, yeah. Okay, that makes sense.
So, so the, the camp, the, the ramp will definitely be one hundred percent compliant to handicap requirements. And there will be no seating, uh, in front of this ramp. So access should never be blocked, um, by, by any tables in the front. So all the tables will be over at this end of the, of the restaurant. Here, we're just gonna have a couple of benches for people waiting to pick up.
Okay. And, and on the far left in the illustration, are those, are those planters?
These are planters that are here right now, and there's also some planters here.
Yep.
On the two ends, which we're, we're hoping to keep there. It does soften up the space a bit with the, with the plants.
Where's the second entrance?
So the second entrance is on the side here.
Okay.
Which is not, it's cut off here, but it's like right here. You see where the arrow is here?
But the second entrance isn't, isn't really used by patrons, is it?
It's more of an emergency, uh, entrance, but it can be used to enter also. It enters the main dining room.
Okay. And that's also where the, the, I guess, is it Sixteen Hall? The main entrance to that is on Hall Place as well.
So the, the main entrance to the building, I believe, is back here.
Yes. Okay. And show me again where the main, where the, where the Hall Place entrance is to the restaurant?
Right here, where the arrow is.
Okay.
And then this arrow here is the new ramp area.
Okay. Got it.
And so as far as the hours of operation, Joe, and, and the trash removal and?
Yeah.
I guess one question before you start that. As far as the waiters and servers, are they gonna have to travel around the ramp, or would they be using both doors? They could use both, right? So if there is congestion, they could always go through the back and be able to? The side, sorry. Great. Because you're gonna have a ramp now. So it will help the traffic in that way.
So we open at eleven and close at like four-thirty. And then we are open at on Sunday. We close at eight. So, and we, we're open till about ten. You know, last, last service is ten during the week. But, uh, you know, people are tr- usually out of there by eleven o'clock or so. We try not to stay open late.
Okay, how about on the weekends? How about Friday and Saturday?
Uh, same, same, pretty much the same, yeah. We, 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 we're not, we're not trying to go past, you know, you know, eleven or twelve o'clock at night, try to like wind it, wind it down.
According to the special permit criteria, you have to be, um, the hours of outdoor dining shall be as follows. Sunday through Thursday until ten PM, and Friday and Saturday until eleven PM. However, the planning board may prohibit or limit the hours of operation if it is determined that the activities associated with the outdoor dining will have an adverse impact on adjacent or nearby residential properties. This is the special permit criteria on the works.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's totally understood, and we, we, we live and abide by that. And for, I just wanna say that for three years through COVID, we hadn't had one single complaint from not, not a single neighbor in, in, in the, in the, you know, as the crow flies, you know, a hundred yards from the place.
Yeah, and, and I was gonna verify that with, I was gonna ask you that first, but also, have, have there been any complaints?
I, I've received complaints, yes.
You have? Okay. And what, what are the nature of those complaints?
Mostly just parking, parking tra- traffic, noise. I mean, I haven't received a, a high volume, but I do keep track of them, yes.
Okay. I, I mean, is it, is it fairly typical for, um, an establishment with, you know, of its size and with outdoor dining? What, is, is there a way for you to quantify that?
Well, I mean, unfortunately, for better or for worse, the, the building department is kind of like the complaint bureau. We, we receive complaints all day long.
Yeah.
So, right, I mean, I, I, we do keep track of the complaints. I mean, the outdoor dining in front of Polpatina has really only been, since they reopened, I haven't really, I, I'd have to go back and check my records.
Okay.
But, um, I mean, but the complaints do get recorded, and it's not just Polpatina that gets complained about. It's, you know, townwide.
Yes.
And sometimes the complaints are not for real. I mean, we get that, too. I mean, it's, you know, we get complaints all, all the time.
Yep.
It, you know, you've been there before. It is a family place. It's not like, you know, we're not trying to make it like a bar scene. It's, it's a restaurant with a bar, not a bar with a restaurant.
I, I would say that my understanding of the nature of the com- parking complaints are, well, certainly from patrons who wanna get in and don't have a place to park. But I think part of the issue that we've seen from an enforcement perspective is people going in to wait for their orders and leaving their cars at the curb, as opposed to people who are there waiting for someone to come out with the order. There are hydrants there. It is a busy, especially in the evenings when the trains are coming out. So I, I don't know, you know, from an enforcement perspective, the police department could monitor that if it becomes an issue. We may have to address the, the applicant at some point in time. But I think that is basically what I was getting from the community in terms of concerns that cars are left there while people are inside. You know, I can kinda see my car through the window if I have to get out there, and it just becomes a problem.
Yep.
And, and we can also reinforce that through our customer base and, you know, you know, our website to say, you know, we have to solve this issue. So there aren't any issues. If you're picking up food, you know, park your car up the street, you know, you can find parking, it's just not in front of the place.
Yep.
Could you do an option where you have someone bring it out to the car for them, or some, something like that?
Uh, probably, yeah, yeah.
Maybe through the side entrance, you know?
We, we actually do do that on, on, on occasion, but yeah, we could do that.
Help you, everybody out in that situation?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I, I, Fisher Avenue is, when you, there's parking on both sides there.
It's, it's, yeah, it's narrow.
And, and of course, there's always somebody who parks like a foot and a half away from the curb to, to further narrow, uh, the, the, the area. And I, I know that because I'm constantly going back and forth to the Crestwood Train Station, pick people up or drop them off, and, and, and that, that is a very busy area right there. And it's, and it's because, you know, you run a successful restaurant, and people wanna be there. People pick up a lot, and, and, you know, and, and then there are people dining there as well. You know, and it, it is a problem, um, you know, it's a parking problem that we're not gonna be able to solve with or without outdoor dining. It's, it's going, it, it's going to remain a concern. How many, how many, I, I think you said there are ten tables? Is that the amount? What, what's the total seating that's, that, that is implicated by this permit application? And how does that compare to the indoor permanent seating?
Yeah, so the, the plan that was submitted shows ten tables. One is a larger table with eight people that's pushed right into the, to the edge of the, uh, the corner of Fisher and, and Hall. And then there's, uh, uh, smaller tables, double tables of four. So there's a total of ten, ten tables, twenty-six seats.
Okay.
Today, without the ramp, there's at least three additional tables there. So we're, we're actually gonna lose three tables with, with the addition of the ramp.
Okay. And what is the indoor seating in the newly reconfigured restaurant? What is the maximum seating?
Fifty, about fifty people inside?
Fifty people. So this is a pretty significant, and it's, it's not, this isn't permanent, of course. This is seasonal and it's, uh, and weather, uh, weather permitting. But it, but it does sound like it's about a fifty percent increase in the capacity on, on an ideal day, if it's, if it's filled. And, and I would say that, you know, outdoor seating works very well on nice days. And anything but that, you, you only have the really hardy people who, who wanna eat outside. So it's not, it's not even half the time, I'm sure.
There's one other thing in terms of the parking issue, which is a little bit of an anomaly here, is that from, and check me on this, but I believe that Hall Place is the divider between Eastchester and Tuckahoe. So you have the edge of two police departments, kind of, you know, leading up from Crestwood Train Station is Tuckahoe jurisdiction versus from Hall Place up Fisher towards Town Hall is within the town of Eastchester. So that potentially could, you know, just make it a little bit more complicated.
Yeah, Hall, uh, Hall Place at Fisher is in Eastchester. Marble Dale Road is, is Tuckahoe.
I think Hall is the dividing line, I, if memory serves me correctly.
Yeah, I think it goes a little, um, a little to the west of Hall Place.
Yeah, that's right. That's the apartment that's just, like you said, west of Sixteen Hall. That, that, that development, I think the, the line is somewhere on that property.
Right, 'cause there are properties on, on the east side of Marble Dale Road that half the lot is in, half the site, the properties in East, unincorporated Eastchester, and the other half the properties in Tuckahoe.
But I get your point. It's an enforcement dilemma.
Yeah, and there are metered parking on Fisher, on the Tuckahoe side. And I believe there's some on Eastchester side by the post office, and then the municipal lot right across, uh, from the post office, which in the evenings, there's always parking available there.
And, and there's also a municipal lot on the, in Tuckahoe, I believe, on, on Fisher Avenue.
Down, down from there.
Down the other way, yeah. So there is parking, it's just?
Yeah, but people aren't gonna go to the, the municipal lot near the train station.
Too far.
Yeah, yeah.
The one in Eastchester is close enough. It's not a, not a far walk from, uh?
Yeah, that's true. That's true. But people are very, very, very lazy. You underestimate.
And we gotta put a gelato place in between the two.
That's right. All right, so, um, it, it, Lucas, if, if we were to determine, I know, I know, uh, do we have to make a single one-time determination as to the hours, or can that be revisited by us?
Well, I mean, the hours are dictated in the special permit criteria. I mean,
They are, okay.
Yeah, if you don't comply with the hours, you lose the special permit.
No, he's saying, can you adjust them?
If we were to determine, uh, let's say that, that there were, there were an inordinate number of complaints in the month of October, November, you know, with people being rowdy at ten-thirty on a Friday night, could we scale back the, the, the outdoor dining at some future point? Such, such that we, we'd have it through nine-thirty or so?
Right. So you can limit the hours now, if you approve the special permit. Or, um, the last criteria says, "The special permit for outdoor dining shall be contingent upon the continued compliance with the special permit requirements and, and any conditions of approval. The building inspector at any time may require that the application reappear before the planning board for a reconsideration of the special permit in the event that the applicant fails to comply with one or more of the special permit requirements or conditions of approval, if there is a change, if there is a significant change in site conditions or upon the recommendation of the chief of police."
Okay, so that's, that's the enforcement arm that we have there. We, we, I, I, I think if we received enough, if you received enough complaints, it, it, it could be discussed and, and we could make that happen.
Right.
So that, 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 it, it, that's the stick part of it. So that, I, I think that's, that's important, that, um, we can reconsider this if, if, if Mr. Lugo's concerns are, get any worse. I would hope that they get better. I hope, you know, as you said, it would, you're actually would be reducing the number of outdoor seats by a few. You know, it, you, I, I really do want you to think very seriously about, um, about the, the garbage situation and, and how that, how you might do a better job of, of making sure that, um, that the concerns that have been voiced are, are addressed. We, we can monitor the, 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 the timing. Do what you can do to, um, to, to make it clear to your clientele, to the patrons of the restaurant, that, um, you know, we, we can't have you parking willy-nilly, uh, wherever you feel like, uh, until your pizza's ready. I like the idea of, of, of having a more organized, you know, pizza pickup place, if you will, bring it out to the car. That, that I think would help the problem quite a bit as well. So.
Can I just have a public hearing?
We, I know we do. I know we do, yeah.
We can actually speak to the garbage, uh, the removal company and see if they could come, if they're coming. I don't know if they come every day or every other day, but we could try to get them down there, you know, more often, if that would help. We're definitely trying not to.
I see them in the mornings. I see them sometimes when I, when I, again, when I'm walking to the train station. So I, I, I don't know when the, the, the garbage is left out. I mean, is it possible to have somebody put it out that, or early in the morning? I don't, I don't know if there's anyone who's nearby, or, yeah.
I, we could, we could, we could, I'd talk to my partner about that to see if that's feasible.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I,
Yeah, there's a couple of, there's a, there's a garbage area behind the building where they allow us to, you know, it's like a corral kind of thing. Yeah, so we put it there, and then we put it out. Yeah, it, they're covered. They're all covered, yeah.
All right.
But we can, I can address that, and probably there's a, there's a logical and simple solution to it.
Yeah, and I know you, you probably get early morning bread deliveries and stuff like that. So, you know, maybe you have somebody just take care of bringing the bread in.
Yeah, yeah.
Bringing the garbage out, in that order.
Does, does the garbage area get shared with the, the rest of the building, or is that a separate garbage?
Uh, I'm not sure. Maybe he would know.
It's separate. It's alongside the restaurant, right on the corner. So just a few people in the corner, it is alongside the restaurant.
Yeah, thank you.
But I, but I think that shared, that there's a shared corral in the back, I believe.
No, that, there is a shared corral with the building, uh, passing Sixteen Hall Place. So it goes Hall Place and then the next building, and then there are two separated inside the COVID-infested area, one for residents and then the next building.
Okay.
Where is the next building?
At the site point, there is an area back here, uh, that's part of this property. So it's, you know, this is not for parks. This is access down to the basement.
And there's no other building, I believe, next to us.
Yeah, the next property is up here.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's where they are, yeah.
Just wanna make sure he's getting on the record.
I'm concerned because you're not speaking into a microphone, that, that the court reporter's not getting this.
Yeah. I can hear you loud and clear, but we create a record, so.
Yes, that area is a small grassed area where the garbage is. Uh, on the opposite side of it is the entrance to two apartments for Sixteen Hall Place. And then around that, where they signal down, is, uh, the fire escape. That is the location of the fire escape for that side of the building. And so that area is generally left open, and the garbage is put to the side as, you know, people need to get out of the apartments. And in the case of emergency, people need to save them out of space to get out in case of a fire. So that's what that area is. And then next, the next building, the next property has, I believe, access to one, one of the, like, across, on the other side of the wall. It's not in our spots, it's on the other side of it, that it is part of the same structure, but they just have their side to it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, do we have a, any other comments from the general public? Yeah, okay. Mr. Lugo?
Sorry, I'm just to the gentleman on the right, how he explained how the hours were an issue on the permit. The last issue was that the proposed outdoor dining will be located at the front of the building within the limits of the property line, and will not disturb the pedestrian or vehicular traffic within the site. And obviously, like I said, the increased occupation would disturb that, and I believe that would contradict one of the, uh, I'm assuming the, um?
Well, just so you know, the, um, that refers to, there's a portion of the sidewalk that is owned by the landlord, owned by the business or managed by the business, and there is a certain amount of sidewalk that is the town right-of-way and requires passage. It's my understanding from the presentation that the proposed dining is all on the property of the restaurant. And the town right-of-way, actually, it's somewhat fortunate, because we have cases in town where the restaurant owner does not have this amount of real estate in front of the store and wants to have outdoor dining, and we can't allow it because of the pedestrian traffic. It seems to me, and maybe Mr. Yanisito can speak to that a little bit better, that the way that this is being proposed for special permit is all on the property of the applicant and does not impact the right-of-way where pedestrians would go back and forth. Now, if people are waiting around for tables or anything like that, that may not be the case. But in terms of the actual dining area that's being proposed, it does not appear that it's on the town right-of-way. Is that correct?
Correct. The, I believe it's ten feet in front of the building. Let me just. So from the face of the building to the edge of the side, public sidewalk, there's ten feet. And all, all the dining tables are going to be within that area, that ten-foot area, within the limits of the property.
And, and I can comment again as a, as somebody who's a regularly a pedestrian right in that area, that, you know, perversely, all, all that parking and, you know, creates a buffer between the pedestrians and the, the vehicular traffic, such that it really, it's, there's not a safety issue walking in that, in that area, even though there is a lot of, there are a lot of vehicles around. But there's always people parked there, so, you know, you, you're always walking between, you know, diners and, and, and cars. And so you're, you're not, you're never going to have a car drive up right next to you and, 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 you know, where, where you'd actually feel it go by. So, and, and my experience has been, yeah, it does get crowded, but there is a sufficient amount of space there on the town right-of-way for pedestrians. That's my experience, and I'm not a small man, so.
I'm not sure if it is on the drawing, but it is missing the tree and the postage sign that is there that does tighten up that space slightly.
A little bit, yeah.
It does tighten up the space. Where, obviously, like I said, they are compacting these tables very close together. I do believe that, you know, in order for a bigger person to get, you know, like, we're not that large, but someone who might, might need a little more wiggle room, those seats are going to be pushed out a little further, decreasing that space. So I do believe that that's just a concern.
Yeah, no, and, 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 you know, contrary to your concerns earlier, you've, you voiced your, your, those concerns very, very artfully, very fully, and, and, and I think we've had a, a pretty robust conversation in this, in this. You know, I would just encourage you that, you know, you, you see everything going on there. You know, if, if, if you, if there's a continuing problem, either speak to the, to, to the management, the owners, whomever. They seem to be responsive. And, and if it's, you know, i- i- if, if the problem persists, the, the building department knows how to enforce these things, and we want to know if, if there's a continuing problem.
And I apologize for the lack of complaints. I'm, I don't like to be confrontational. I like to, you know, allow them to do their own thing.
You're handling it just, just perfectly, and, and, and it's, it's helpful to have this type of dialogue. That's why we have a public hearing. We want to make sure that we are informed. You know, I, I happen to know this area from going past it, but you live there. You would know it better than I do. And it's important to hear those concerns voiced, so that we can address them at a moment when we have the full attention of, of the owner. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so unless there are any further comments from the public, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on application twenty-three dash twenty-nine, Pulpatina.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I, I'm inclined to, to, to grant the application, you know, subject to being able to revisit i- i- in the event that the problem gets, you know, the problems that have been identified get any worse. I'd expect that, you know, that maybe they'll get a little better. We're reducing actually the amount of outdoor seating due to the ramp and, among other things. You know, one, one, one unavoidable problem, if you want to call it that, is that with your reopening and a lot of positive publicity, you know, it, it's become a hot place to dine again. You know, it, it was closed for a number of months. Now people want to come back. And, and, you know, that's a good problem for, for you to have as an owner. But I just want to make sure that you're, you're aware that, you know, you, you are in a neighborhood, and it's a very residential neighborhood. And, and, and there are a number of, of concerns, particularly with parking. You know, I, I think there's always going to be some concern when you have outdoor dining and, you know, that, that, that not everyone behaves, you know, as nicely as we want them to all the time. You know, that's something that you'll have to enforce maybe a little more rigidly i- i- if it becomes a problem. But otherwise, I, I'm prepared to, to make a motion to, to, to approve this application, you know, subject to our, our ability to revisit if, if some of these criteria are triggered.
Also, if I could just add, in, with one of these criteria, just, just for the public record, I did share the application with the chief of police and the, and the fire department, and they both had no comments.
Okay, alright. And, and again, it would be subject to the, the hours that, that you're normally in business. But, you know, if, if there are problems, if problems persist, you know, and, and there are complaints that trigger these criteria, we may, we may want to revisit that. So that's strong incentive for you to keep things moving smoothly and, and to be as considerate as you can possibly be to your neighbors. So with that said, I make a motion to approve application twenty-three dash twenty-nine, Pulpatina, sixteen Hall Place.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lugo.
Thank you.
Alright, nice. Alright, finally, we have.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Come down for some pizza.
Thank you.
I would have gave it an eight point eight, by the way.
Good night. Alright. Alright, finally, we have application twenty-three dash thirty, two forty-nine Main Street and twenty-seven New Street. And, believe it or not, I think I'm the only one sitting on the board here, well. Also, Rob was here at the time, but we have an almost entirely new audience than you did with the prior iteration of this, so. I'm the institutional knowledge here, and, and I guess Rob is as well. But I understand that you're here to make an initial presentation as to a new application at this, what's largely the same site, but is actually a larger site than had been previously proposed. So, let us have it.
That's correct. So, my name is Antonio Fredda, and I'm representing Angelo Agavino and Manor Developers. Manor, I'm sorry, Eastchester Manor Developers. So basically, as you have understood, what we're doing is taking the old application, amending it to add two more stories to the structure, and also to add a, another lot behind the, the original lot, which is facing New Street. And providing parking only on that particular lot. We're not enlarging the footprint of the building at all. So the actual site, as it was before, remains practically identical to the, the, the proposed site is identical to the old site, with the exception of two parking spaces which have to be eliminated in order to access the new site from, from the old site. Well, so we've increased the size, the, the height of the building, and the number of units. Number of units have increased by ten, each floor having five units, and they're identical floors all the way up. We have provided ten additional parking spaces. We had twenty-six originally, and now we have thirty-six. The required number of parking spaces is forty-three, so we're deficient in that, because we don't have enough land area. And the height of the building is, of course, permitted as four stories, and we're, we're seeking six stories. So the difference in the actual height, not the story height, but the, the number of feet is, is forty-five versus sixty-seven. So it's about twenty-two feet higher than, than the original permitted height that we had. The access to the site will remain the same on, on Main Street, one way in, one way out, and proposing to, to have access in from New Street, and then out on Main Street again. So that we keep the traffic study, you know, pretty much the same as it was before. Other than that, it's pretty much sums up what we're requesting at this time.
Okay.
If there's any questions you want me to?
Yeah, I, well, I'm, I'm debating how much to, I, I, I know you're, you're suggesting, and, and for me, it, it helps to conceptualize this, that effectively you're amending the prior application, which was approved. And, and I know we, we had a pretty fulsome back and forth, you know, with, with the, the parking underneath and, and even, even the, the power lines. I think we had, we had a big issue and the, the fire station is right there, and, and so there were a number of different concerns that were raised then. But as, as I, as I mentioned, I'm the only board member who would remember that. You know, you know, Chairman Jim Bonanno is still on the board, and I would assume has a pretty vivid recollection of that. It wasn't that long ago that you were here. It was a few years ago, two years ago, that you were last here, and we approved it. He's not here today, but, you know, he, he will presumably be here next time. But for the other three members of the board, this is brand new. And, and for Lucas, it is.
Actually, I worked for the county planning board when this was referred to the county planning board.
Thanks, Lucas. Thanks for making me look like I don't know what I'm talking about. Alright, well, he wasn't wearing his Eastchester hat at the time. So, can, can you give us just a little, a little more background on, you know, particularly for the benefit of, of the other members of the board here, on the, the site? And, you know, certainly, you know, you, you can give us all the color that we need about it. You know, the, the prior application and, and how it was approved, but, you know, what we'd be going from now, because nothing's been built, to, you know, to, to what you're now proposing, and, and how that fits into the neighborhood in particular. Because, because we did approve a four-story building, but this, this is a six-story. And I remember there was, you know, I, I, I think you guys may have been pushing for something bigger than.
Well, we, we were pushing for, actually, what it was is that we were pushing for a few feet more. So only, only to allow a larger-sized beam members in between the floors, so we had to settle with smaller beam members.
But you've made clear this is twenty-two feet higher than what was previously approved.
Right, no, no, so we were a hundred percent.
But, but that's still twenty-two feet, and, and there aren't too many six-story buildings in the town of Eastchester. Maybe there are, there are some are missing. I know there's one, like, right over here. But, but there aren't too many.
Yeah, so there is one, actually, about a block away.
Oh, there's the.
Which is almost seven stories.
And, and I know there's the senior.
Senior building.
And then there's some around the, you know, the corner, around the bend of Main Street.
Which is the senior building.
The senior building, yeah, mhm. There are a couple of senior, well, one is actually maybe in Tuckahoe, but one's in Eastchester.
Angelo Agavino, how you doing? The, the building that's right, to the right of the firehouse, so it's the building that we're proposing, the firehouse and then the building to the right, it's a fairly large building. You don't really see it there because it, it looks, there's a parking structure and then steps back.
Yep.
That is fairly sizable. I think it's about seven stories. Going to be part of our presentation in the coming months.
Yes, yes.
To actually get the height like we did prior to this building and, and go across. You know, to do a little bit, you know, you know, get into the nitty-gritty with you guys, you know, to explain. But I believe that building that's, that's right to the right of the firehouse is going to be similar height.
Okay.
Be a little bit less, but.
Alright.
Or maybe a little bit more.
Let, let me ask the obvious question. What's motivating this?
What, you want to answer that?
Yeah, sorry. The reason why this building wasn't built yet, because we realized, once we went to Conadisson to get those power lines put on the ground, was going to be minimum a half a million dollars to put those power lines on the ground. With the property behind here, we're going to be proposing to the fire department, which it, it falls into the guidelines for the fire truck to access it from the back there. But in order to, to pay for the lot and, you know, to make the project make sense, we're trying to, you know, balance everything and, and also make it profitable, if possible. So, that's really what drove this.
It's money. It's, 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 it's making something that works financially.
Yeah, I mean, we, the beginning, when we talked to Conadisson, it was always around a hundred grand, and then they started getting into the numbers, and then it was two fifty, and then it's, they, we needed another pole, then they needed this, because the main feed for, the reason is, the main feed for Tucko actually comes up, which are terrible luck that we have, is on the pole to the left. It comes up the pole and it feeds down south on Main Street. So it comes in from the, the sewer on the right, there's like a, like a, I guess from the ground, and it goes across up under the pole, so we would have to move that to a different pole, and then it was just a, a lot. With Conadisson, then you had to get Verizon and AT&amp;T and all these other companies too. So it started getting between a half a million dollars to three-quarters of a million dollars.
Yep.
To do all that. So it just, it, it wasn't, you just couldn't build this building to do that, yeah. So, in order to build this building, or to, to keep this idea going, is we would need to do this. If not, then we'll have to structure it a different way or do something else, I, you know, maybe. But hopefully, you guys will love it. And we'll work hard with you guys to do it.
Yeah, I, I, I can't guarantee that, but that's why, that's why you come here. And, and right now, you can't build the old building. You'd, you'd at a minimum have to come back to us to get the approval, you know, extended. So that's, but, but that's not what you're here for. You have a new application, same site, a lot of the same concepts. Except you want to build it a little bigger, and, and by, previously, what was the, was it fifteen units?
Fifteen units, yes.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is what. Yeah, it's, it's sixty-seven percent more. And, and, and what was the breakdown in, in sing, in, in one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
And two-bedrooms, and fifteen one-bedrooms.
So it was ten, I'm sorry, but what was it? What was it previously?
Nine and six.
Nine and six. So the, the proportions remain roughly the same.
Yeah, it's five per floor, there's three, three one-bedrooms and two two-bedrooms on each floor. And just a typical floor that we just added two more.
Identical layout.
Asking for two more.
Yep, because I know that, you know, certainly one of the concerns that we went through last time, and I'm sure we would go through again, is the impact that it would have even on the school system, you know. You know, we address all kinds of different concerns here, and, and this is not, there was no public hearing today, so the, the benefit of this really is to, and, and I'll, I'll shut up, although I really love to hear myself talk, but I'll shut up and I'll let you guys present. So for the benefit, again, of the other members of the board, just give us a, an overview of what the, the site is, and, and what you're proposing now. And if you want to mention what was previously approved, that's up to you to do so. But for their purposes, for the purpose of the other members of the board, they don't have the history, so they just want to know, what do you, what do you intend on building and?
Before, we never, we didn't ask for variance for height. It was, the, the height was as of right. We asked for a few variances, which were minor. I don't know exactly which were, it was.
There was one side which, which like misses six inches of, of my side.
And this, like, this, this, this ramp over here, it was one percent less, so we didn't ask for many.
There were minor variances.
Yeah, it was.
And, and to be honest with you, I, I don't remember that, because we did resolve it. We have five percent slope here, and we have less than five percent. We have, we meet the slope requirements all around the site, so I'm not, you know, I don't know why that was even required.
Tell, tell, tell us about the property. Tell, tell me in particular about, about the new lot that you've acquired and.
If I could just make a quick clarification, all previous approvals have expired.
I know that.
So this is like a, this is as if, yeah.
If I could ask one.
That's how I encourage you to present it, as if it's brand new. The only reason I'm, I'm a little, it's, it's triggering my memory, and I'm interested in knowing, because I, I did go through the process of approving this once, what's different, you know? And, and so the what's different is just really for me. I'm less interested in it. I can. And, and so the what's different is just really for me. I'm less interested in it. I can figure it out. Tell them what this application is.
If I could, if I could ask one question before you start, sorry. As far as the sequence of this review today, is this already been reviewed by zoning or anything like that?
No, it's only been reviewed by staff.
Okay, great. So this is the first time you're presenting this new change?
Yeah, and this is an initial sort of getting...
This is a preliminary site plan approval and, or site, application for a site plan approval. It's gonna have to go to zoning because there's two variances. One of them is parking. At least two variances. One of them's parking and the other one is the height and the scaling of the building that the zoning board's gonna have to review.
Okay. And also just one other thing. This is gonna be an unlisted action according to SECR. And either the planning board or the zoning board will have to declare lead agency or it could be an uncoordinated review. That, that won't be decided today.
Yep. So the sequence will be initial presentation today and then they come back here again?
Right, well, I mean, there may be meeting with staff first and then, and then we'll take it from there.
But, but, but they'll be back here at some point.
Before it goes to zoning.
Before it goes to zoning. And we'll have a public hearing, right?
It could go that way. I mean, there, there's no set formula, you know? They're here just to, just to present and then we'll just kinda take it from there.
Yep, that's, so, present away.
So just, let's just say that you saw this for the first time.
Yes.
This is a entire lot on its own here, facing Main Street, and an entire lot here facing New Street. There's a, an existing two-family house there with a garage. And there's an existing two-family here with a garage in the back as well. Right now, it's not used. The, the, the building now, the two-family is vacant and abandoned. It's not usable. And so it's pretty much just used for parking and, you know, landscape trucks and so forth. So the, going back to that, the issue with the density that you were referring to. So our allowable density at that 700 square feet per lot area of one, one apartment, we're allowed with these two lots to gather 30 units. We're not proposing 30, we're only proposing 25. So I don't know if that makes a, a difference whether that, you know...
It's really up to the zoning board.
Yep.
Yeah, so, okay. So that, that's, that resolves that issue. All right, so this is just more of the same.
And again, the, the, the fire station is, is, would be on the bottom here, right?
Right here.
It's the next building over, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a ramp going down here.
Yep.
And then there's the fire station and then there's parking and then there's ambulance parking in the back of that. And that we're, so we're adjacent to that.
Yep, but you're not affecting that property otherwise. Yep, you're just next to it.
No, no.
Yeah, that's it.
So of course, there's a, there's a residential building here and a residential, residential building at this point. This is facing New Street and this is facing Main Street. Given that what we're doing on this side of the street, which is more residential than this side, is just basically parking cars and putting vegetations. And we're removing the structure that's there, of course, and that's, that'd be the end of that. And on this side, leveling this off in a certain way so it allows for access, again, for the 5%, you know, ramps coming in this way, going down a little bit more and then coming out this way. And, and also working out the parking so that we can go under the building from that side and this side. All right? Also, the, the other reason for, for doing all of that is to, is to gain the average grade around the building so that we take our height from that point. And, you know, so you have difficulty when you have to conform with the, with the ramps, the 5% ramp, and then also produce that, that average grade around the building and then, you know, take your height from that point. So this, it all worked out perfectly at that time with this lot. And this is not really of any effect whatsoever because the slope from here to there is minimal. And we have almost 130 feet or whatever it is. I'm not sure on that right now. But it's almost 125 to 130 feet.
That's the new, the new lot.
The new lot. So we have more than enough to, to make a slope.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's probably even flat at that point. All right, so on this new proposal, I say new because we have a building which has two big side yards of about 22 feet each. Required is 10, 10 each, but because we're using this to access parking areas under the building and also to, to maneuver cars out of that, these parking spaces, we have to have the wide lot area there, okay? So the building is sitting on this property with, with about 22 feet on each side. And the size of the building is, the lot I should say, is 104, 101...
101.
Huh?
101.
101, my glasses in here. 101 feet wide, okay? The back, we're providing the 30-foot rear yard that's required. In the front, we're providing more than the 10-foot that's required, or 15, I just...
144 long.
Yeah, no. And then, of course, you have the open lot on the side, on the, in the rear of the, the site. What we have on this building is, is a, a turnaround which has to occur under the building. So we, we've cantilevered the upper floors above the parking. So you go to the, the side view of the building. Here we go. So you're coming in here from this side, from Main Street, and then traveling, these are the parking spaces, and then traveling to the back. And then this is the portion of the building which is cantilevered above the, the backyard or portion of the backyard. And the parking is here and the travel for vehicles is under, partially under the building and partially open, in the open area. So going back to the site. So the access to the site is, is next to the fire station, which is to the north. And they travel around or down to the parking spaces if they're coming in this way. Or they could come in from New Street on that side and then park here. And then when they come out, they'll come out this way and out into New, into Main Street again.
But New, New Street is an entrance only? It's one-way?
One-way and one-way.
Okay.
Yeah, and then this is the exit from the lot. Okay? We, we, when we got the variance for this side yard in order, for, for the backup, we did a zone, a maneuvering diagram. I don't know if you remember that. So we showed how cars would exit out of this spot because it has a 10-foot wide versus nine-foot wide parking space. Because they need, that's what's required under the building, so that's what we have. So I think we took care of this. This, we have enough, we have the required maneuvering space here, but it was a variance here. Here we have all the maneuvering spaces that are required. Because we have parking spaces here and here, we have more than 24 feet between them. And here we have 24 feet in this particular spot. So the only place that it's, it's lacking a little bit of maneuvering space is on this side. And that's for, for, for vehicles, for parking spaces only. We have two parking spaces on the side of the building that are not in, within the required yard. They're outside. So there are those that don't have any maneuvering problems whatsoever. They just park right in and go around and park whatever which way that they can. All right, so as far as the site, that's basically it. We, we, we have in the front of it a rock. So it's from the sidewalk, the, the site slopes up steep.
Yes.
So what we need to do here is to, to lower it down to a level and then create a, a planted area, starts lower and then goes up high to where the walkway is in front of the building. Okay? So we can maybe show that in the, in the front elevation. No, it's not that one. Okay, we don't have that particular one. We have another plan which we show.
Have the front elevation?
Yeah, maybe right here. Yeah. No, we don't have it, okay. We did have the section through the lot. Okay, we don't have that particular, but we have it on, on our...
It's on my...
Okay.
The, no, the rendering will have, has it.
Yeah, we're gonna...
Yeah, the rendering will have...
What we did last time for you guys will have a 3D.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Because we can, we really, this is a front elevation, so we really can't show the wall. Then it would be, you know, a different level of the building. So it's not, it's in the front of the property. All right, so anyway, but this is a wall, okay? And then behind it is planting and it is, it's sloped up. And there was another landing here where walkway exists. The handicap ramp here and it continues up and it goes into the building this way. What we've done here, take care of garbage in the building, is created a, a, a space where we have a hatch door opens up with conveyor belt. And it brings out when required to, to take out the, the trash to come out at this point and then come out from the building at that point. So in the cellar of the building... We have a compactor. So on each floor, trash could be, you know, thrown down the chute. Goes into a compactor. And then we have all the space here in order to store the, store the trash. And then this is a conveyor belt system that comes up to the sidewalk. On this side, we have a recycling room for paper and bottles and plastic containers. And then all the meter rooms and so forth on this side. A small gym area and some storage units for the tenants in the building. Okay? On the first floor, basically a, a lobby. Access from the front, this is, this is the, the trash chute opening here. And then the, I'm sorry, the conveyor belt opening. Then the walkway, ramp, walkway, and then entrance to the building. Meeting room, lobby, elevator. This is the trash room. So if they have trash on the first floor, you can go in here. And then an entrance out to the parking for handicap. So we have two accessible parking spaces which go directly into the building through a, a handicap ramp area. And then there's an exit to the back of the building. So whoever's parking in the lot on New Street and who's parking in all the others' parking spaces in the rear yard and in the back of the building on the lower set, they can come in comfortably through here instead of traveling all the way to the front of the building or even to the middle of the building here. And in this particular case, these parking spaces can access the building through the steps that are here. And they come up and they come into the front of the building. Or they can walk around. It's up to whoever's, you know, parking there.
So it's a very truncated first floor. It's not, it's, it's not a full, anything close to the full width of the building because the parking's taking up a lot of it.
Yes, yes. This is basically the, the floor, you know, the first floor. Everything else is out in the open.
Yes, got it. Okay.
Right. So the upper floor now is extended 13 feet over. That's that cantilever we spoke about before. And so we have a central hallway here with, with the apartments coming off of it. And the two bedrooms are here and here. And then these are all one-bedroom units with some French balconies on the side yards. And in the front, we have four balconies facing...
So each, each floor has...
Five of them.
Five, two, two...
Two, two bedrooms.
Two bedroom and three...
And three one-bedrooms.
One bedrooms, okay.
And they're, they're good-sized, you know, units. They're over 900 square feet.
And these are, would be rental units, right? Yep.
Yeah, rental or condo.
Or condo, okay.
Depending on what they finally do with the building, right? Yeah, and so that's it. That would be, that would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 4, 5, five floors up to the sixth floor. And then the roof is pretty much just an open area with access by two bulkheads and the bulkhead for the elevator.
Yep.
And for the trash chute. And that's it. So there's a parapet wall all the way around. Zero cover protect view for, from all the mechanical units that are up there. You know, which you'll need some mechanical units for, for the hallway, conditioning, air conditioning and heating and so forth. And so this is the front of the building. We basically didn't change the materials or elevation from the previous application. And...
It's gonna be hardy and like the, you know, cement board.
Cement board, yeah. It's basically a siding, cement siding, cement board siding and brick on the first floor level. Full brick around the, the building at the first floor level because you have cars and more traffic and so forth.
These are walkout balconies.
Yeah, each, each unit has a walkout balcony or just the, the two-bedroom or some...
There's only one unit that doesn't have it. The other ones have French balconies and the front units have the walkout balcony because, you know...
Those are the two-bedroom, right?
This is the one-bedroom and this is the two, so even the one-bedroom has a walkout.
In the front.
So the two bedrooms are on this side of the building and then the one bedrooms are on this and kind of take a little bit of the back.
Got it, okay.
And then these windows are all in the hallway, so the, the central hallway is, is naturally, you know, lit from, from outside. It has natural light. There's a side view on the north side or the right side of, of the slot on Main Street. Yeah, firehouse on this side.
You would look out here and you would see the firehouse, just to...
Yes.
And, and this is access to the parking spaces.
Got it.
Okay? These are the balconies that are coming out from there. And these are the French balconies. They're not actually extending out to the...
This is just like a railing screw to the, so you open the door and you can kind of Juliet.
This is the back of the building. No balconies here and you have access to the parking from there. And these are air conditioning ventilation vents. And this is the other side of the building where we have access to the parking here. And then these are the steps that go up to the front that we mentioned before to get into the building from, from the side. And then, then this goes down, the ramp goes down to Main Street this way. And this continues over and then there's the, the, the sloping landscaped area that goes down with a wall there.
Like a small stone wall in the front there.
That's it. Those are just elevations, those bulkheads.
Good. Okay, so that, I think that gives us, I mean, it, it actually, you know, it, it's obviously taller. It's, it's a bigger massing than the, the prior iteration. But, you know, as you said, you've held on to a lot of the same architectural features. Yeah, that, that, that I guess we, we had approved the last time. So you, any other members of the board have any questions about this? So, I mean, there'll be plenty of opportunity to suss this out and, and... So, I mean, there'll be plenty of opportunity to suss this out and, and, you know, see what, certainly the public will, will, I would think, have some comments on it.
Yes, just aside from like, you know, when 25, excuse me, 2117 proposed the six lot subdivision, there was a lot of discourse about the increase in traffic and water flow and septic and all that stuff, so I'm sure, like, my concerns are the same as people in the community about that with, with a unit so large.
There's gonna be a public hearing when you come back for slight, actual site plan approval after the pass at the zoning board for the variances. So the public will be able to address those issues or concerns and you'll hear from town experts about, you know, the capacity of the stormwater and, you know, sanitary sewer, et cetera.
Yeah, because I, I know you, you definitely are with the, with the new lot as well, that's going to be basically a parking lot. So I, you are unquestionably having even more impervious surface than you had before, but, you know, that there, there are ways to address that and I'm sure we'll hear from you about, about your plans to do so as, as we move forward with this.
What do you, on the first floor, do you have a package room of any sort now that you've increasing?
I'm sorry, just, I couldn't.
On, on the first floor in the lobby area, is it just mailboxes or because you're increasing the tenants, do you have like a package room of some sort?
We have the mailboxes right in the front as you come in.
Yeah, every, everyone gets deliveries now, so.
Yeah, just one thing to keep in mind for the future presentations.
The mailboxes.
Okay, just something to consider with a, a lot of packages for the bigger type of residences.
This room here, I understand what you mean because.
Meeting room.
Ordering stuff online.
Yep.
I mean, essentially this, this room would, I guess, be the overflow of anything that's not delivered to the apartment or, you know, just put in their mailbox is gonna be a bit larger mail, you know, it's not, you know, crazy amount of apartments, so if it doesn't fit in their mailbox, it will be the overflow into this room, which.
Well, it's a big enough lobby, they, they can put it on the floor here or here or anywhere, but.
Well, with apartment buildings, I can say, I, I live in an apartment building similar to this and with package delivery, it depends on the super of the building. Like, I mean, how, how is that, I mean, you, the question I would have is, is there gonna be a live-in super for the building? Is one apartment going to be assigned to a superintendent?
No, so this building will have FOB access and I don't know if you saw that, the newer buildings, they have like the screens, the, the type of system that I want to put in here is, you know, like Amazon has access to the building to come in, so no one can come like across the street and take the package, so it'll be a lot.
That's what I recommend, is it some type of a virtual doorman service?
Locked door, like a vested, or whatever lobby there.
Yeah.
And they'll be able to put the packages as.
Also, the new postal boxes that are required by the United States Postal Service, they have lock boxes integrated into the postal boxes. So you'll take the key from your, your postal box and open that, that cabinet.
If it comes with USPS.
Right, I'm assuming USPS would review that.
USPS only, I'm saying, yeah, that's for them, but of, you know, a, a lot of times Amazon, if they get in, they'll leave it on the floor.
Just don't want to leave them outside, so that's why.
Or if you provide them with a special box, I don't know if it's gonna be big enough for you sometimes.
And, and my bigger concern is I don't want the Amazon truck sitting outside making deliveries while sitting on Main Street. It will, it will come into the property, I'm sure and, yeah.
Yeah, you have plenty, plenty of landing area, even, even a recessed area here, so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, also, Amazon is kind of a moving target in terms of how they deliver items. I mean, by the time this gets approved, they may be delivering things with drones. I mean, we, we don't know. I mean, they, they constantly change.
Are you considering a drone heliport?
You know, I, I think the packages will be secure and then once, you know, the delivery guys kind of get used to the people that are there, they'll figure it out like, hey, you can put instructions like, leave mine to the left and you leave yours to the right like that.
But our concern is much less the delivery of packages and, and more its effect on the, the general neighborhood, you know, the, the increase in traffic, you know, and, and the like, you know, so.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna be stopping on Main Street there.
Yeah, that's.
That's what I was just referring to as far as this traffic.
It's fairly large for this building, so it's gonna be, it's kind of like making them gravitate in there instead of, you know, because they're not gonna want to carry it from the street and go up, they're gonna want to pull next to the door.
Yeah.
So they're gonna pull up and jump out of the truck and go right to the front door.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's, it's a very, it's not really tight, so you could pull it, this is designed to have a big UPS besides the Amazon, like a big UPS truck to, to make this turn.
Yep.
Great.
And.
Also, we have this door here which they, if they stop on the driveway, you know, they can access it this way as well, so.
Okay.
Those, those screens will be at every door, so if Amazon has, needs access, their, their computer will be able to open the doors.
Tell me again about the roof, the rooftop. It's, I know, I know you have the bulkheads, the two bulkheads, the elevator and the trash compactor.
Stairs.
Yeah, it's stairs, that's right. Is there gonna be anything, any, any, it's just a flat roof? Yeah.
And no amenities.
No, okay, just, just checking, I, I didn't.
No amenities, like, like.
Oh, no, no. The only thing is, is, you know, ventilators that you need, but those would be, you know, screened by the parapet wall.
So there, there isn't really gonna be access to the roof other than by maintenance people, right? Yeah.
People working on, on items up there.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of emergency push for stairs, you know, God forbid there's a fire, they'll be able to, you know, help the people.
The Amazon drones will come get them.
One thing to just keep in mind to that point is since you are higher or depending on, I don't know what the press was, just making sure that the mechanical units are covered in some way, so from a distance.
Yeah.
But I think you said you have a parapet, I'm not sure how high the parapet is, but as far as that line of sight to keep in mind.
Proposed because it's the logical location is on the top in the center.
In the middle, got it.
So that's, you know, and we have the duck space here for the.
So it should be covered from the parapet distance.
You won't be able to see from the back or, or the front for sure and from the side, you, you, you know, you have to go far away, you know, how far, be able to see even a little bit.
Okay, I, I think unless we have any further questions, I think that's, you know, you've satisfied exactly what I was hoping you would, which is to make an initial presentation of what the project is and, and, you know, we will certainly, you know, give it our fullest consideration in the coming months. So thank you very much. Dee, I don't know if you have any further questions for us at this point?
I just wanted to, if we can clarify the process, because I, I think you guys are the board to, you know, if we can go for the variances and then, you know, those, the height variances and the parking and then come back to you guys with a, a full package and then go through, you know, the, the public hearing and all that stuff.
I, I can, I can talk with you about that, about how, how it gets sequenced. There's a couple of ways you can, you, you have some ability to do it different ways.
Okay, I, I didn't, I misunderstood that because I, I thought you.
Yeah.
All right, no problem.
Yeah, I can talk to you, I can talk you through with the building inspector.
It, it would be premature to send it there now, I guess that's the point, but we'll, we'll have a better clarity as to.
Yeah, it depends on whether the, the SECRE review is coordinated or uncoordinated. There's different ways to do it, there's benefits and.
Yep, yeah, but, but.
And issues with either method, but I, I, we can go at that through you at the staff level and then we can bring it back to the board.
Perfect.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so I think we're, we, there's no public hearing yet, so I think let's wrap up this presentation and, and thank you for it, okay?
Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Happy Halloween. All right, so I think that's all we have, so we've done everything else, so I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of October 26, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, the next meeting will be on December 7th.
December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, yeah.
There's no, there's no.
Thanksgiving, yeah, yeah, so you get bumped to the first week of December instead of the last week.
Okay, so happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
As well as happy Halloween.
Good night.
And again, kudos to Lucas for his Halloween slash Thanksgiving colors today, fall colors.
It's the one time of year I get to wear this.
All right, very good. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, all.